Councilman Canoyer, seconded by, did I hear a second?
Second, I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Susie. Anyone else have any other items to be taken off the consent agenda? If not, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Communication, other matters.
Minutes.
You don't want to finish the consent agenda?
Yeah, look, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two, C-39, secondly.
C-39.
Yep, C-S39.
From City Solicitor regarding correspondence received from the Department of Labor and Training pertaining to Ms. Lori Perry's complaint.
Do I hear a motion to receive?
A motion to accept.
Yep. Councilman Canoyer, motions to receive, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Councilman Canoyer.
Yeah, I ask for this to be just copped out separately because, for the public and others, this is a notice from the Department of Labor and Training that says, after a thorough review the city of, after a thorough review, the city of One Socket, try that again. After a thorough review, the city of One Socket owes Lori Perry for her 2021-2022 healthcare buyback. Goes on to say, I won't read the entire thing. I found no evidence to indicate that the employee needed to be employed by the city on June 30th, or if the employee's status of full-time versus part-time is a requirement of the buyback. So that's from the Department of Labor and Training, and I bring that up because, and then we also get hit with a $375 fine in connection with this as well, for not paying Ms. Perry her buyback. And I bring this up because when we discussed this on, at the September 12 meeting, the Deputy Finance Director, Cindy Johnston, delivered to this council in writing, and she stated, quote, "The Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training dismissed the case, no hearing, no hearing conducted." Remember that? And it was given to us in writing, and she stated it. And she also stated that, she's the one who indicated, the employee needs to be employed as of June 30th, and all that other stuff. Ms. Johnson was wrong, dead wrong. And we're going to talk more about that stuff later tonight, so I just want to make that very clear, okay? Contrary to Ms. Johnson's assertions to us, the Department of Labor did not dismiss the case without a hearing. In fact, they found in Ms. Perry's favor. So, that's all I wanted to cover for now, and this will come back up later.
Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing then all those in favor of accepting the communications, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, the minute says presented by Councilman Canoyer, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion.
That's for October 3rd and October 4th.
Any discussion? Hearing then all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes were approved.
Council President.
Mayor.
Thank you. I would have included this as a communication if I had gotten a little bit advanced notice, but I wanted to ask the city council if we could schedule a work session, a special meeting for Monday. I was contacted by the council president in North Smithfield, Mr. Buregard, who has requested to possibly see if the city would be able to provide water for the new 146 highway that's being installed, and they would like to look into running water from the One Socket Water Treatment Plant up 146 to possibly service future properties. So if we could, I'd like to ask that to be put. I told him I would ask for a meeting with the city council and present what some of the ideas are, and see if there's any appetite or discussion, or just none at all.
And, that's, I'll ask the council's indulgence, but are you expecting representatives from North Smithfield to attend?
I can certainly ask them if that's what you'd like.
I think it would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, if there is.
I'll ask the council president, Mr. Buregard, to attend.
Okay, if there's no objection for an availability of.
Confirmation, so we're talking about the 24th?
The 24th, yes.
A week from today.
A week from today. Our usual Monday effort.
Correct.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then I would ask the clerk to schedule that meeting for 7:00 PM here at Harris Hall.
Council President, could we also put on the agenda to have a discussion about Caspock as well?
By all means, never hurts to discuss Caspock. Okay. If there is nothing else, we are up to presentation of petitions of memorials and remonstrances.
Twenty-two P-36, a request of Assistant City Solicitor Wazlick to address the city council regarding the following item. Veto message regarding ordinance 22040 in relation to the solicitor's legal opinion that local number 808 collective bargaining agreements dated July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022, and July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024 are legally binding contracts.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Peter Wazlick. I am the Assistant Solicitor for the city of One Socket. I will speak clearly and loudly through these ridiculous masks, and I will read a statement so that I will not misspeak any of the words, assuming that I can see with my bad eyesight. So, I want to begin by indicating that the attorney-client privilege restrains me from disclosing or discussing any privileged communications that I may have had with the clients, that is, Mayor Lisa Baldelli-Hunt and the city of One Socket City Council. The mayor asked me to assist in the composition of a veto message on ordinance 220-40 relating to the police union local 808 contract with the city of One Socket. I assisted the mayor in drafting the veto message, but never provided a legal opinion to the mayor regarding the legality of the police union contract. According to the city charter, the only individual authorized to issue a legal opinion on the legality of the police union contract is the city solicitor, John DeSimone. Several months ago, the city solicitor did ask me to research whether there were any prohibitions in the city charter, the Rhode Island state statutes, the Rhode Island case law, that would prevent the city council from negotiating the police union contract. I performed that research and could not find support for prohibiting the city council from negotiating the police union contract. As a result of that research, I provided the city solicitor with city charter, statutory and case law, that supported the city solicitor's legal opinion regarding the city council's authority to legally negotiate the police union contract, and I am in agreement with that opinion. I will not comment further on this issue because of indifference required by the adherence to the attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President.
If I may ask a question related to the question.
Question of me?
About the topic of city council negotiating a contract. At no time did this city council as a body sit to meet, or designate, or delegate any subcommittee, or group, or individual, in its authority to designate a party to sit at the bargaining table. Am I correct there? And who was the only person, solicitor, who negotiated at the bargaining table with the collective bargaining unit? Was that you?
Well, I negotiated along with other people from the administration.
Of the administration.
Okay.
And in your experience, has it not been a common occurrence that administrations will meet with legislative bodies, city councils, school committees, to discuss the terms that they deem acceptable to them, or offer solutions in attempting to settle contract negotiations?
Yes.
And frequently, these offers made by councils or school committees will actually be brought to the bargaining table?
Yes.
And could become part of a collectively bargained solution?
Yes.
And so, is anything that we're describing here represent unilateral action of the city council to exclude the administration in this particular collective bargaining process?
No.
And would you characterize it as simply a recommendation to be brought before the union for their consideration?
Yes, which is what the council did by resolution.
And in the unanimous decision, we instructed you to bring that offer?
Correct.
And it was accepted?
Yes.
So, I guess I only say it because I understand your point, except that this council did not negotiate a contract under any term that I can think of in my experience since 1995. And that's all I wanted to point out.
Right, and all I would resign by saying, I was not involved in any of the details of the negotiations of this contract, so I can't comment on, I was not intimately involved in any aspects of the police union negotiations, et cetera, et cetera.
Now, I just wanted to bring your issue into the context of what occurred.
Council President.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I just have a question. We had a two-day hearing where all these matters were being discussed, and I guess my question is, where were you? Where was the solicitor that could have brought, I think these matters are important, this is what we were discussing, so I don't understand why all this stuff is coming after the fact. We've had a hearing, everything's, we had, you know, Sierra brought a complaint, wanted to remove the mayor, she's out. And this stuff has, the time to discuss it was during the hearing, and when I looked around, I did see the solicitor, so, you know, he was around, you know, but these questions should have come up, and these comments should have happened at the hearing.
My response is that the solicitor and myself were sitting in the solicitor's office under subpoena for the 14 hours of the two evenings, and we were there, ready, willing, and able, if we were subpoenaed to, we were subpoenaed, we were not called to testify. And we have no, we cannot just appear and talk at that hearing, we were subpoenaed as witnesses that evening.
So.
Subpoenied by whom?
The council, I understand, subpoenaed us at the request of the mayor.
Okay, so official subpoenas went out?
Official subpoenas went out, we were served with official subpoenas from the clerk of the council on behalf of the administration.
Okay, I'm just wondering why it's all being hashed up again? Like, when it's all been resolved, there's been a decision, the mayor's out, and it just, again, we're just talking about this thing over and over again, and now bringing all these different points where it's a settled matter.
If I may explain, from my perspective, the reason it's being discussed again is because all I have seen is the accusation that, and frankly ridicule, from those who say that, first, it is not within our authority, and second, we have no business, and that we actually negotiated the contract, and in fact, we did not. So, I wanted to mention that because it's my first opportunity, since these allegations have been spreading by wildfire in the media, that in fact, they are not factual, they don't represent what occurred. And for those who insist upon it somehow being that we did, then they're making allegations that are false. And so, it was offered as testimony, the mayor had made the allegations before, it had been denied in public before the hearing, and I am simply trying to make sure, from my point of view, that I have the opportunity to address it again, to make it clear that procedurally, we were handling it in a proper form. That's the only reason I brought it up again. I think Mr. Wazlick's point of his communication is dealing with what occurred in the hearing related to his message and the misinterpretation, so that's where I see that.
I think some of that, what I heard, is during the hearing, I remember turning to Councilman Canoyer, and actually just speaking in general, not directly to him, and just saying that at that hearing was when I realized, or I was made aware, that he had actually negotiated, and I said that specifically, you know, to him at that moment. I, in my two years serving here at city council, never once has Mr. Canoyer ever, like, if he's been accused of something that he's not, you saw it today, he's not ashamed to say, "No, I didn't do that." In my conversation, when I said that, he didn't say, "No, I didn't negotiate." It's all coming, like, after, and I'm like, we had this hearing, and the hearing was supposed to be where all the facts come out, and for whatever reason, it didn't. He didn't deny it at that moment, you know, he didn't correct me, you know, we can play back to it, I was not corrected, you know, but now, all this, again, is being hashed out.
All set?
Yeah, all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Twenty-two P-37, a request of City Solicitor DeSimone to address the city council regarding the following items. One, New England Police Benevolent Association, NEPBA, local number 808 collective bargaining agreements dated July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022, and July 1st, 2022 through June 30th,
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to go over a couple of issues that were addressed at the hearing, and I was very eager to testify, and I was subpoenaed, but I never got the opportunity to testify. So as you could imagine, there was a ton of inaccuracies and distortions, and just false accusations that went by, but I'm going to just try, I'm just going to try and keep it at a level whereby we could just be objective. So first and foremost, the police negotiations with local 404 and local 808. So I know the council was, during the testimony, it was mentioned that it was three years, and in my comments, I attached a list of police negotiations. You'll see the first negotiation was February 1st, 2019. I think it's important for the council to understand that on January 19th, a new contract was signed, January 19th, 2021. So those earlier negotiations had to do with another contract, and then the local changed their representation, so really, the first, the first negotiations took place around October of 2021, and it was settled in June of 2022, which really isn't that long of a period of time. But, when the issue came up of negotiating the contract, I want the council to understand that we did research on that, to see whether or not it was acceptable for the council to participate in making offers to the police department, police union. And part of our research was case law, which Assistant Solicitor Wazlick had provided me, and also was the city charter. So I looked at the city charter, and in the city charter, which is pretty descriptive, and actually very simple, but one of the duties of the mayor in the city charter is to see that all terms and conditions imposed in favor of the city in any contract or franchise are faithfully kept and performed. Now, it's important to understand that it doesn't say negotiate there. So as a lawyer, taking the charter as a whole, words have meanings, and even though you may not like what they say, they have meanings. So the reason why the word negotiate wasn't in there, you must assume it wasn't in there for a purpose. And there's other provisions of the city charter that say, anything that's not specifically defined or embodied is reserved for the city council. In addition to the charter, I looked at the Labor and Labor Relations General Laws, Municipal Police Arbitration Act, which is 28-9.2-3, and in the definition section, which is what I heavily relied on to come to my opinion, that the contract was valid, legal, and the council had every ability and lawful right to provide an offer through me. Corporate authorities means the proper officials within any city or town whose duty or duties it is to establish the wages, salaries, rates of pay, hours, working conditions, and other terms and condition of employment of police officers, which certainly the council does that every year when they do a budget, whether they are the mayor, the city manager, the town manager, the town administrator, the city council, the town council, director of personnel, personnel board or commission, or by whatever other name they may be designated, or any combination thereof. So specifically speaking, by law, one can easily see that you could make an argument that the council has more right to enter into police contracts. And I'm very familiar with this because there's a police arbitration statute, there's a fire arbitration statute, and there's a teacher arbitration statute, and I've been dealing with these statutes for years. So I very much knew that, but I checked it anyway. And I consulted with other lawyers, all of which came to the same opinion as I did. When I had the inclination that it was going that way, I had already done the research. We did this research well before the council made an offer to the police department. So, in terms of whether the council had the ability to make the offer, I think it's unquestionable. It's not even a close call that they certainly did. And for anyone to say that that council was illegal is certainly unfounded and absolutely not true, at least for what research I did. And I would also bring, point out that there was a lot of mention there that somehow the solicitor missed the boat because the, there was a city charter provision that said all contracts had to be ratified by the council. Frankly, if that was true, you could make an argument that the council couldn't make negotiations, but it's not true. There's nothing in the charter that says that the city council ratifies contracts. In fact, it's in the ordinance that was created by the council. There's an ordinance on the books that years ago, I think Council President Ward referred to it, I have it posted on my bulletin board in my office, because when I first came here, five and a half years ago, someone told me all collective bargaining agreements have to be advertised, and that's something I really didn't know. So I got the section of the ordinance, and I put it right on my bulletin board. So anyone who came in my office would see that, and maybe someone saw it and thought it was city charter, but it's the city council ordinance. And as you well know, any ordinance that's created by a prior city council can be changed by another city council. You can't bind one city council to what another city council did in the past. So, those two assumptions, those premises are inaccurate, and that's why the contract's legal, because it was an ordinance that was referred to wrongly, not a city council, a city charter amendment or provision, it was merely an ordinance, and this council had every right to supersede that ordinance. There was nothing, nothing at all in the charter that would somehow subvert or conflict with my opinion. So when you read the charter, and when you read the general law, that contract in my mind was binding, and the right for the council to pass a resolution and say, bring this to the police department, was absolutely fine. It wasn't even a close call.
Mr. DeSimone, just, I don't mean to interject, but I do have one connecting point to make because you mentioned the general laws and the body, the corporate authority that establishes wages.
Yep.
And I just want to connect it to the city charter under when ordinances are required, which are approved by the city council, or actually voted on by the city council and approved by the city council, and one of the specific categories where an ordinance is required, not an executive decision, but an ordinance, is Section G, which is to fix compensation, which just supports everything you say.
Yep.
So it's actually in the charter that the corporate authority to decide who shall represent, or who shall negotiate, or how it shall be negotiated rests with the city council.
Right.
Thank you, I'll let you continue.
Right, and so, I just want the council and some of the people who allowed themselves to watch that all that time, to understand that a lot of that testimony was absolutely untrue, absolutely. And I have received no notification from any attorney, either verbally or in writing, at any time, that my decision was incorrect, and certainly, if anyone came forward and said, "Hey John, you know, did you look at this?", I would have gladly looked at it, and if I had to modify my opinion, I would have. There's no pride of authorship with me, the law is always changing and evolving, zero. No one came forward, and no one expressed that opinion to me, and I talked to at least four or five attorneys who I respect, I showed them our charter and the general law, most of them knew the general law, and they said, "Yeah, of course, there's nothing wrong with that." So I just want to clarify, the legality of the contract, in my opinion, was legal, and I made that decision, and I communicated that to Cindy Johnson for the administration in an effort to get a impact statement, and, you know, where it went, it went, but this council knows full well that those provisions exist and are binding. And, you know, the other thing I'd like to mention, in terms of the negotiation of the contract, I've been negotiating contracts for a long time, and without speaking specifically about this particular contract, when you're a negotiator, you don't have the authority or the right to say, "Well, I'm going to offer 3%, I'm going to offer 2%, I'm going to give you a bonus," you know, I don't have that right. If you hire me to negotiate, I negotiate what you give me. I can't sit back and say, "Well, you're looking for 3%, well, I'll give you 3.5%." I can't do that. I can only offer what I'm authorized to offer. So, sometimes, offers don't come forward, sometimes people make decisions that they don't want to go forward with a certain offer, and sometimes, you can't get a contract. That's why this very statute exists for binding arbitration, because many, many times, you can't come to a contract. I was shocked that somehow or some way, the fact that we didn't get a contract like that was somehow related to how I negotiated, because it's an absolute pathetic, ridiculous statement, but be that as it may, I just wanted the council to understand where the rationale came for the legality of the contract. And the last thing I'm going to say, because I really don't, I could go on for a long time, but I really don't want to get into it, but the last thing I mentioned here, number four, hiring outside counsel without permission or knowledge of the solicitor. So I had no knowledge of the outside attorneys involving the, one of the charges, you know, hiring an attorney for $40,000 or $36,000, one for redevelopment and one for some other conflict. I didn't have any conflict. Why would I have a conflict for redevelopment? I don't have any conflict. I had a conflict in the, in the removal hearing, of course, because I represent the city council and I represent the mayor, so I had an inherent conflict, and I immediately conflicted myself out. I make that decision if there's a conflict, not a layperson. So I was never consulted as to, you think you have a conflict in terms of, you know, hiring outside counsel? So, a lot of what you heard, you know, just wasn't at the mark. It shouldn't have been testified to, I don't even know how it was relevant, I don't even know how it came in, should have been objected to and not even been talked about, but the fact that the charter, and you have to understand this charter, this charter was developed probably in the 50s, and in them days, perhaps, you know, as political entities go, the council probably had a lot of pull in them days, so the council created a, pretty much, a one-sided charter. So as the city solicitor, it's my obligation to interpret the charter. So even though I may not like something, if it says it in the charter, and it's not unconstitutional, then it's binding. So, and that's what a good solicitor should do. I shouldn't be looking to make friends, I should be looking to uphold the charter, because at the end of the day, the solicitor represents the city, the city of One Socket. And I took that seriously, as I do with all my clients, and. And it says duties generally, the city solicitor shall be the attorney for the city and legal advisor to the mayor, city council, and all other departments, except the school department, offices, and agencies of the city. So the city solicitor shall appear for and protect the rights of the city in all actions, suits, or proceedings, civil or criminal, in law or equity, brought by or against it, for or against any of its departments, offices, or agencies, and shall perform such other duties appropriate to the offices mayor and city council may require. So when I took this position, I read the charter and I took it seriously. So if you ask me an opinion on the charter, I'm going to give you my honest answer. I don't have a horse in the race. That's what it is. Now, some clients, when you give them their opinion, they get mad at you. Other clients say, okay, that's your opinion, fine. I'll go elsewhere or, you know, we, we can work it out. But at the end of the day, whatever solicitor you get going forward, next year, you know, hopefully you're all reelected. But whoever's there, you're going to want a solicitor that looks at the charter and makes his rulings. And that's what I did in every single instance since I've been here. And I did that with the police contract. And I did that with hiring outside counsel. And I did that all the time. While it may not have been, you know, fun or pleasant, that's what I did. And I would have loved to have testified at that hearing, but I did not get the opportunity. As Assistant Wozlick said, we were subpoenaed. I was there for two nights in my office. I stayed away because I was conflicted out. So we viewed it on the, on the screen, in the, on the computer. And I was waiting to testify. But no one ever called me. And I can't call myself. So as you know, Valerie, David, and everybody else, I very, very, I don't think I've ever spoken to the council in any form or fashion. But I felt compelled, due to a lot of misinformation that was out there, to just say, say what really happened. And you all witnessed it when we had meetings. The only thing I did was communicate what the, what the council ordered me to do by resolution, and I communicated to the, to the police department. They accepted it and we had a binding contract. And that's the end of the story. I, I gave my opinion that it was legal and binding and should be followed. And under the charter, as Wozlick said, the solicitor's opinion is final. So that's really all I have to say. I, I'd be willing to answer any questions. But I looked at the law, I looked at the charter, I looked at the case law, and I came to the conclusion that it was a binding contract. And I had no other reason than what, that's what I thought it was. So, you know, you could ask me questions that sort of say, well, why are you bringing it up? I'm bringing it up because there were statements said that were wrong and inaccurate, and you people should know. What you do with that information, I have no idea and it's none of my business. But I felt compelled to let you know and the city know, that was, that was my opinion. And there is no charter provision that says, you just ratify. None. If there was, different story, but none. So with that, I hope I didn't take up too much time. Thank you.
Any?
Just one question.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Was there ever any discussion about Attorney Larissa calling you to rebuttal some of that? Because if, if, again, all this stuff should have come in the hearing and while you were subpoenaed by the mayor's lawyers, you know, that would have been a good rebuttal for the complainant, you know, and at least the information would have been made public at the time that it was allotted for all of it.
I was waiting. I can't, you know, I wasn't called. But I wanted to be, I wanted to be questioned. I can tell you that. As you could probably tell from my testimony, I was praying to get called as a witness, but I didn't get called. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Twenty-two P thirty-eight, request of Councilman Canoia to address the city, to address the council regarding the following items. One, Department of Labor and Training DLT decision regarding Ms. Lori Perry's claim for her healthcare buyback, along with the deputy finance director Cindy Johnson's written and verbal assertion at the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, that the DLT dismissed the case without a hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the first item we've already covered, and I put this on here, and, and I'm just going to address upfront, Councilwoman Gonzalez, you asked, why are we talking about this now? Fair question, some of these things. So here's the deal. We had a hearing, some people called it unfair, the whole nine yards, and, and I get where they're coming from in, in many regards. However, at that hearing, we, the council, were not going to be witnesses. You can't be a witness and a judge at the same time. So we were not witnesses, that's why you didn't hear anything from me when assertions were being made. We weren't going to be pulled into being witnesses and so forth. And you're right, normally, I'll be the first one to speak. I am not, I speak up, I'm not shy. But I bit my lip, because that's how the lawyers, Mr. Harusak basically instructed us that we are not witnesses, we will listen to testimony. There was very little objection you got from, from the council, because they wanted to give the mayor a very, every opportunity to make the defense that she felt she needed to make. But as much as you heard about some of the unfairness and the kangaroo court and all that stuff, I think that was on all sides, because normally if you went to a real court, you wouldn't have a witness being questioned by an attorney, returning questions to the, the attorney, and giving speeches about all kinds of stuff that frankly were irrelevant to the question here. But we, we gave the mayor utter respect and deference as much latitude as she wanted. But tonight, I'm going to respond to some of that testimony that was given under oath by both the mayor and her star witness, Cindy Johnston. So that's why we're doing here tonight. So, first item, as I said, the Department of Labor and Training has ruled in favor of Ms. Lori Perry, and it's absolutely contrary to Ms. Johnston's assertion, both in writing and verbally to us, that the DLT had dismissed it without a hearing. She was wrong. Okay? Next, at the, at the hearing, the, not the hearing, at the city council meeting on October third, we talked about an ordinance that reclassified the classification of an employee in the law department. We classified, we moved it from nonclassified to classified. And if you recall, Ms. Johnston felt compelled to come to the city council to share with us her objections and so forth, both on that, as well as the ordinance we had in connection with Ms. Perry. So I want you to keep that in mind. We had two ordinances that were on the docket, and Ms. Johnston felt strongly enough that she showed up and sat where Mr. De Simone is sitting and told us the DLT hadn't, had dismissed it when she was wrong. And then she had an objection to what we were doing with the classified, nonclassified. And I asked her at the meeting, well, what are the other individuals in the law department? Are they all nonclassified or classified? She said, no, they're all nonclassified. And I copied you all on an email the very next day. And she was wrong. Quote, here's her response, you, meaning me, you are correct. I was incorrect in my statement. So that's two wrongs. Okay? Next, staffing vacancy report. Okay? Now you heard Ms. Johnston, when she was under testimony, as a witness, she stated that one of her duties is to ensure the accuracy of the staffing and the vacancy report. Remember that? Okay. Well, at the September twelfth regular city council meeting, that was the last staffing and vacancy report we received. And I specifically asked Director Gillette about the vacancy report and the staffing report. And I said, Director, this staffing report, this vacancy report indicates there are no vacancies in the police department that we're fully staffed, and it's been like that for months. And I asked Director Gillette, and you can go back to the tape, and he said, no, we have a number of vacancies. Wrong again, Ms. Johnston. It's your job to ensure the accuracy of the vacancy report, and it's inaccurate. The next item. The whole discussion about the contract, there's a couple of things here we're going to talk about. Number one, this, this, this assertion that Jim, that Jim Canoia negotiated with the local eight oh eight a contract. Both the mayor made that assertion, as well as Ms. Johnston. Ms. Johnston said the contracts that we passed, the two of them, would result in a deficit. And she had a financial impact statement that she presented at the hearing on October fifth, that none of us have ever seen, just fell out of thin air. And she had done it three or four weeks prior, she said. So, let's talk about this notion, as you know. And she said that she never received a copy of the contract prior to it being ratified and approved by the council. She said that it would lead to a deficit, very clearly. Big numbers, two and a half million next year, two and a half, two point something million, two point five or six billion in two thousand twenty-five. She was emphatic. And her attorney, I'll read you from the, the hearing, he said, quote, "The question to Ms. Johnston was, before the city council passed the contracts in question, did anyone ask you to provide your financial analysis?" Meaning Ms. Johnston. Her answer was, no. Actually, I wasn't even given a copy of the contract. Mr. Lepizera, it's your responsibility to review the financial viability of the contracts, correct? Answer, yes. Not Councilman Canoia's, correct? Yes. Should you be doing a financial impact before or after the contract is approved? Answer, before. Question, did anyone ask you to provide a fiscal impact statement on these contracts? Answer, no. Question, if they asked you, would you have done it? Answer, yes. Question, in fact, you were charged with the responsibility, weren't you? Correct? Answer, yes. Question, not Councilman Canoia, correct? Answer, yes. Another answer to a question, I was never given a copy of the proposed contract prior to the city council meeting. Okay? Another answer, I am in the finance department. I'm the deputy finance director and controller. I am very familiar with our account balances and our budget. I work with, I work with it every single day. I think I have pretty good experience and education to make the decision. I don't need the council to make it for me. Okay. So that was all very entertaining. I felt like I was watching Perry Mason when I was 12 years old. But here's the problem. It's all BS. Straight out lies. Here's the email from the law department to Cindy Johnston on July sixth. You know when we passed and ratified the contract? On July twenty-fifth. Here's the email with the entire contract. It testified, under oath, nobody ever gave me a copy before the, before the, the council passed it. Absolutely false. Absolutely false. Kind of like the DLT dismissed the case without a hearing. Kind of like I'm in charge of the accuracy of the vacancy report, which is not accurate. Kind of like all the employees in the law department are nonclassified when in fact, no, that's not the case. Okay? I did not receive a copy of the contract. Absolutely false. I'm going to ask the solicitor now. Did your office provide Ms. Johnston a copy of the contract and request her to do a financial impact analysis? Simple question, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And that was on July sixth, weeks before the meeting where we ratified it. Refused to do it. And we've seen this over and again. I know some of the public doesn't want to hear it, and they don't care, and we're just big mean bullies and all that. If they asked you, would you have done it? Yes. In fact, you were charged with that responsibility, weren't you? Yes. Because the charter says it's her responsibility. Not Councilman Canoia's, very dramatic. So here's the email. That's number one. Number two, here's the July twenty-fifth docket. This went out to everybody, including Ms. Johnston. We had a public hearing and we had a resolution to ratify the contract. Now I just reminded you that when we had on the docket, two items, just random items, something to change a, a classification for an individual in the law department, as well as a item to pay Ms. Perry her healthcare buyback, Ms. Johnston looked at the docket and showed up, wanted to bring to our attention things that were of her concern. In fact, she even put together a package for us, if you recall. She handed it out, told us that the DLT had dismissed it. What are you doing? Wow. So keep that in the back of your mind. July twenty-fifth, the docket, the agenda in the docket get posted. Ms. Johnston is on that list. She gets the docket in advance. There was A, a public hearing on the contract with the financial impact analysis that was prepared by the council, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. And then B, not only was there a public hearing where anybody, including Ms. Johnston or anybody else, could have stood up and said, oh no, nay, nay, this is not good, it's going to give us a deficit, et cetera, et cetera. But not only was there a public hearing, we then had an actual resolution that we discussed and deliberated, no different than the resolution or ordinance we had in connection with Ms. Perry's healthcare buyback, no different than the resolution and our ordinance that we had in connection with changing the classification, both of which Ms. Johnston was more than happy to sit right there and dialogue with us and express concerns. Did you hear a word from Ms. Johnston or the mayor or anybody else on July twenty-fifth? When this came before us for A, a public hearing and a passage? The answer is no. Absolutely not. But nobody told them in advance. Twenty-two R ninety-three. Having said that, I know what the charter says with respect to the deputy finance director's But it only applies if the individual is A, capable of doing it, and B, willing to do it. When you have someone that just refuses to do it, now you're going to do something else. Which brings me to Rhode Island General Law forty-five, five dash twenty-two. Nope, I take that back. That's, yes, collective bargaining, financial impact statement. So Rhode Island General Law forty-five, five, twenty-two, here's what it says. Prior to executing any collective bargaining agreement between a city or town and representatives of police personnel, firefighters, and any other municipal employees, now here's the important part, the city council shall prepare or cause to be prepared. So the council absolutely, by law, can prepare it. They can prepare it or they can cause it to be prepared. We tried to cause it to be prepared. The, the, the law department sent it to Cindy Johnston on July sixth, and we got what we so often get from this administration. A thumb to the nose. Didn't do it. Didn't do it. So we did it, within our rights. Within our rights. Rhode Island General Law absolutely gives us the authority and the ability to do that. So all this testimony under oath saying, I didn't get a copy, nobody asked me, it's perjury. It's shameful. And it's what we've been putting up with frankly, for a long time. Now, let's talk about the financial impact. Again, Ms. Johnston provided us a financial impact analysis that night and scared the crap out of everybody, to be perfectly blunt, suggesting that what we did was going to provide, uh, cause a deficit. Once again, Ms. Johnston is wrong. The analysis that we prepared was a hundred percent correct. It's been reviewed by Mr. Luber and others. And if you guys actually looked at what we prepared, that was delivered at the meetings that we had, and again, we had, in case people forget, special meeting on April eleventh, April twenty-eighth, May sixteenth, May thirty-first, June seventh, with the mayor and the administration to discuss the local eight oh eight contract. And you all know- And you all know, one of the things we kept pounding the table about, what is it you're proposing? What's the financial package? What are the language changes? Better yet, where's the finance department? How many, every one of those meetings, we lost our minds figuratively. Where's the finance department? Mayor, where's Chris Chamberlain? Where's Paul Luber? Where's Cindy Johnston? They don't work for us. They work for the administration. Never brought to the meetings. Am I right? Yeah. Damn right, I'm right. Okay? August of two thousand twenty-one, I hear, "We got to work together." This is a year ago. "Good morning, Mayor. I have some things to share, but should be covered in a work session so we can all be on the same page, as well as hear from the administration regarding what changes, issues they would like to see. Thanks, Jim." That's in regard to the police contract, okay? We had our first, that was a year ago. Let's all get on the same page. April eleventh, we had a work session, an executive session here, got a little testy, and I said exactly these words, "Mayor, we're just trying to be all on the same page. We need to hear what you want so that if you propose something, you'll have our support. We've got to be, we need a consensus. We don't want you to go and offer something, then come back to us that's not acceptable to us. Let's all get on the same page so that if this thing goes sideways..." These are my exact words. "So, if this thing goes sideways, we're all in it together, and we're not finger-pointing." Okay? We tried over and over and over again. The solicitor got tied to the bus and dragged through the city on October fifth and fourth, October fourth and October fifth under testimony. The solicitor cannot negotiate a contract with the police or anybody else for that matter unless they have some direction. It's like me asking Mr. Sucey, "You're in charge of my insurance. Go get me insurance." And he says, "Well, what exactly do you want? Do you want just liability? Do you want collision? What kind of a deductible you want?" "I'm not going to tell you. You're in charge of getting my insurance." How does he get my insurance unless I give him clear direction? Can't do it. And again, you folks who were at the meetings, what is it you're proposing? What's the financial package? What are the language changes? Meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, okay? Let alone back in August of last year. What is it you're proposing? We never got anything that, nothing that was ever given to us in writing, tangibly. It was all this theoretical stuff, whiteboard nonsense, pictures of whiteboards, discussions. And at the end of the day, if you're a union member, okay, what you want and need is something that you can look at, touch, and feel. Okay, you're offering X. Well, telling me that you're offering three percent or four percent doesn't mean anything to me. It's interesting, but it doesn't mean anything to me unless you can actually see what it means personally. Okay, four percent, let me see. I'm at this rank. I currently make this salary. I can go across to each year. Oh, now I understand what it means to me. I can either get behind this, or I can get, I can say I don't accept it. That's what we did. Now, this crap about Jim Canoia negotiated the contract, I didn't negotiate with anybody. I did my job. I spoke to people, including police officers, all of whom are members of the Local Eight-O-Aid. I spoke to the mayor. I spoke to people in the finance department. I spoke to lots of people. I did the job I get paid to, okay? I am not a potted plant that's going to sit up here and wait to be told what to do. I'll work with anybody and everybody, but at some point, and you all know this whether you want to admit it or not, we tried and tried and tried, and I think you know that. That's why it was all unanimous what we did. After getting nowhere with the mayor in terms of her providing us a single tangible document to suggest or show us what it is that she wanted to do on the contract, I finally said, "Okay, enough. Here's what I would propose." And I put together, and she likes to mark it, which is fine, one of my Excel spreadsheets with yellow highlights, and I presented it as a proposal to the council, along with some language changes, and frankly, some important language changes. And what I proposed absolutely took into account what we heard from the mayor in terms of she didn't want to have a retro for the prior years because of so much work. Took into account what we heard from the solicitor in terms of their discussions. And I put forth a proposal that the entire body discussed, deliberated on, and then accepted and voted unanimously, and then instructed the solicitor, not Jim Canoia, the solicitor, to reach out and deliver that to the union and see if he could negotiate something off of that. And once we gave the solicitor actual clear direction, in other words, "Mr. Sucey, I want you to get my insurance. And what is it I want? Well, I want these type of deductibles. I don't want collision. I don't want this, and I want that." Now, he can go out and procure insurance for me in a meaningful way, in an intelligent way. Same thing. We finally gave the solicitor something that he could actually go to the union with and put in front of them that they could look at, touch, feel, and understand. And I'm criticized for that? I hear people say, "I regret we did what we did. We have a police department that's been depleted. They're one of the lowest, if not the lowest, paid in the state. They've been without an increase since, effectively, since July two thousand nineteen. We've been at this for two years. The last contract expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. We're two years into it. As I said, we tried and tried and tried." And then finally, I put something forward that's amenable to everybody except for one person, the mayor. I don't know why. Personally, if I was in her shoes, I would have just said, "Thanks," and move along. And I did exactly what I've done on a consistent basis up here, okay, with the contract. I didn't negotiate with anybody. I listened. I watched. I asked questions of lots of people. No different than when the administration came to the council for an amendment for the cell towers. I looked at the documents. I spoke to Mike DeBryce. I spoke to Director D'Agostino, and I made a proposal. And as a result of that effort, we're getting twice what the administration had recommended for those new cell towers. I did the same thing with Thundermist. The administration came to us with something on the docket to do an assignment to a new legal entity. I looked at the documentation. I looked at the contracts. I spoke to Mike DeBryce. I spoke to the director. And as a result of my efforts, we got a check of over a hundred and five thousand dollars into our general fund that we otherwise would not have gotten.
Council President, just point of order. I know you have two more points. You're way beyond the twenty-minute.
We just hit the twenty-minute mark.
Mark.
Yeah, okay. So, the point is this. It's no different than I did with the six seventy contract. Remember that? The administration came to us with a six seventy contract last year. We looked at it. There were some concerns that some of the women in City Hall were not getting enough because I'm a misogynist. There was literally a concern raised by one of the council members that the, quote, "Ladies in City Hall were not getting their fair share, and it was all going to the Highway Department." So, what did I do? I listened. I asked questions, and I came back with a proposal to address that, and they got more money. Not because I negotiated, not because I did something wrong. I put something in front of the council, and the council at every step acted as a body. That's how we do business. And what we did with the police contract, it was unanimous. Very briefly, and I'll wrap it up. The Wunsucket Housing Authority, they brought in Bob Corenti to do a report, and there were oftentimes suggestions that what we went through was similar. Let me just read to you very briefly two sentences. "In Corenti's report, these failings were characterized by near complete disregard for HUD policies and WHA, Wunsucket Housing Authority, rules, regulations, coupled with..." And this is the part that I really find interesting. "...coupled with senior leaders' repeated disavowal of any responsibility and deflection of blame to others." Okay? Deflection of blame to others. "The Director of Human Services and the Executive Director acted as if they were..."